So who wants to go first?
I brought it up, so I will take that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that later.
Are you just like?
Do you have twenty minutes?
I don't need more than that. So are we staying here or? Okay, well, I'm gonna walk over to you for just a minute. So I brought, oh, I'm sorry. A little bit more explanation. So Gail, you have brought up that why my personal services look so high on the printed sheet that you had. And I did speak with our new auditor Jacob on how he would need to represent that. And if you look in the back of the budget, there's non-budgeted funds. It's not your book from Heather, but the actual budget worksheet that she has sent you for our 2024 budget. There's non-budgeted funds and that's where my special highway is. So how that fund works is it's a fund that I can use to pay for things that I need for motor vehicles, whether that's equipment or people. We've had an understanding that I fund half or so of my salaries, which that's not quite that much anymore. But so every year I've used roughly a hundred thousand of that to give back for salaries. We've represented it different ways throughout the years. Sometimes a reimbursement, sometimes we just cut my budget down by that amount. When talking to Jacob, he mentioned that if we cut my budget down by a certain amount, because this is based on collections in my office for motor vehicles, if I don't collect that much, I can't fund that much. So if I don't have enough in my county side of the budget, then I'd be in budget violation for being over budget on those personal services. So he asked me to do a conservative reimbursement for you guys, which is what I have on the sheet that I've given you. I broke it down to the salaries that I'm asking for. I've got overtime on there. I just can't get around overtime. I mean, if the people are in the door, we wait on them. We do until we're done. And then we balance after that. Then I've got my contractual commodities, they're up by very little. I don't usually use all of that, but again, it's just one of those you never know. I don't feel like I'm asking for a whole lot in those two categories. I don't try to spin that down to zero every year. I'm not about that. If I don't need it, goes back to general and I'm fine with that. My reimbursement shows there was eighty thousand. Last year I didn't collect quite as much, so I did drop that down to reflect that. The state is going a little bit more digital with things. They want people to be able to do title transactions online. So I get a five dollar fee for every transaction that we process for the most part. So if they take those away from me in-house, I will not collect as much to be able to give back to you guys for that. So I did drop it down a little. I've represented the statute pay on there that does come out of special auto, that does not come out of tax dollars. It is by statute, I have that statute, and it's based on those collections that I do make. There's a formula for it, I could give you that if you want it. I also put my budget totals throughout the years from 2019 coming forward. And then I put a little block on there to represent the raise that was given by you guys to my employees to adjust that 2023 total. And then I showed you the overall difference from what 23 was and what I'm asking for 2024. On that special auto fund, I could choose to just send out of it freely as I wish. But I do like to give back to the county for those salaries so that you don't have to deal so much on that. It's a fair agreement, I feel like. I'd just like you to know it is based on collections and I don't control that number. So keep that in mind when you're considering that. Have asked for raises. It's broken down on my budget on the form that Heather provided for us. I don't feel like those are out of line. I have extensively researched with other counties. I have been on Indeed, I have researched other jobs and what they offer. And I feel like those are right in line with where we should be. I've looked at other wages within the county and those departments. Tried not to get too out of line on those, tried to stay pretty level with the potential increases for what people are going to ask for in other departments versus what they are now. And I don't know what they're asking for actually. But if we're asking for two dollars roughly, I'm trying to stay within that realm. Aside from my deputies, I feel like they need more for what they do for me. They deserve more. I'm prepared to defend that with documents here. I have my folders. If you'd like to see those wages from other counties, I've got that. I've asked for a raise for myself. I am prepared to defend that as well. I have other county wages. And I, whatever questions you have, I'm ready.
I would love to see the other counties. If you want to email that to me or probably.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, more research we have on studies of other counties or, you know, other like jobs in the county.
Absolutely. I certainly will. If you look at it right now, if you'd like to.
So you have to give each eight dollars.
Sure. Yeah, just email them and we'll have them. In the computer too.
I'm not too willing to beat them up too much right here.
I am prepared. I'm ready to go.
Well, I think Cindy, you always are really tight with your budget and you're very honest.
I think so, yes.
So I noticed that at the end of June at least, that you're really close on your budget. So when we gave those raises for this year, we haven't allocated any of that money to different departments. So I can see that you're really tight with what the raises that we gave.
Right.
So I think with your department, we may need to look at that to make sure that isn't what puts you over budget because we have saved that money back.
Right.
Meaning that there's going to be more expense. So I just appreciate your honesty with your budget every year and how you run things.
Well, thank you. And to speak to that, I'm okay right now. I can wait because I will pay out of special auto. If that goes to start looking negative, then I'll need to switch back over to county and I would need a transfer to cover that. But I'm willing to wait and see how that plays out. Because with that special auto, it is by statute that December 31st, that balance I am to transfer by June 1st of the next year to general. So if I have a balance, it'll go back to general. So I wouldn't want to transfer money to me that I would just end up giving back anyways. So I'm willing to wait on that.
I don't want you to be in the negative either at the end of the year and then have to explain that.
Right.
You know, in years to come.
Yes, yeah.
So because that's the decision that we made.
Well, as far as that is, if there's upcoming tax sale, what kind of revenue? Once we get caught up to this tax sale, should help the overall county itself. Those funds should be substantial.
Yes, and those are, we have kept the collections for those returning abstract fees separate. And then we'll keep the collections for the actual cell itself separate. So you'll be able to see those as they come in. Of course, we've paid for title work and things out of general, but we do have funds coming in to kind of offset that.
Will that happen this year?
Tax sale? Yes, it should definitely happen this year. I would be very disappointed if it did not. We should be almost ready to file petition.
That's forty-five days.
She has to serve and publish three consecutive weeks and then we'll be able, I think after that, set a date. That's all I have. Yep, I'll email you what I've got. No problem, there's other wages for all departments on some of them, so you'll have that for them as well. I'm sure they're prepared, but. Got it? Gosh, that was easy.
Thank you. Next. Thank you for joining us, Kathy.
I'm on time. Just another second, two o'clock.
That's the way we won't be here then.
I can go, I don't know. I'll get mine. Mine's pretty, mine's pretty easy, pretty straightforward with budgets that change for my departments. I've tried to stay within that. There is an increase because of that mailer, the R and R. I did get an estimate this week for this year's and it was right at eleven thousand seven hundred for that. Now, that includes postage and envelopes and paper, obviously, but that's kind of where that comes in. So I have twelve thousand there. I do, last year it was offset once the final payment was received to be a little higher than the estimate. I do have increases for my staff as well. And I think it just follows specs to where kind of everybody is asking for to look at the same comps that I think Cindy's sending you as well and it will reflect some of those things. My office is maybe slightly unique because we all, I changed in 21 how we operate. So everyone in my office is cross-trained collectively, outside of payroll. Obviously, with HIPAA and the protection of privacy, Cindy administers all of that. But there are things that aren't tied to any employee's information that others both in my office do. Employees' months, birthday cards, filings, different things like that. So I have, I guess, we just all, everybody does everything. I don't ever want to be put into a position if one of my employees leaves that we're just stuck and nobody knows how to do something. We do so many things in there and I can't jeopardize that. So it was hard for me this year. I wanted to be as honest and transparent with the salaries as I possibly could. So when you see some low amounts in there, so like 23 for clerk, there's an hourly rate for one position at only five dollars and thirty-seven cents. Seems like a strange number, but if you reflect to some of my other budgets, you'll see another kind of small amount for that reason to collectively give to a whole salary. And the only way I know to, I just watch those budgets and I make sure they don't ever get into the negative. And I will change the payroll code to reflect for that employee to go out of the next budget. Does that make sense?
So out of the three, if you add up the two low wages, it basically is one person, so.
Yeah, it's close. And then elections is slightly different because like for last year, I had to have summer help. So we brought someone in, I target teachers, people like that who have summers off. And they can come in and do a lot of the different mailings and things like that. And so some of that in addition to just one person rotating into their payroll, it also helps compensate for some of that pay as well. I definitely foresee it will need additional election help next year. As you guys know, we have a third election presidential in March that we'll be doing. Sorry, it's hard for me to not talk about all my other departments and only singularly talk about just the one. It's because we're all related in everything that we do. So that's the clerk side, I guess, I get into. Any questions on the clerk side of things? Pretty standard of any other budget, I think, I've submitted to you, except with the change of the R and R notice and then the increase in, requested increase in salaries. Okay. Elections. Okay. So we have to buy another couple pieces of equipment. So I need another DS 200. Currently, we have ten polling locations. As much as I think I could close one or two of them, doing it for next year would just be crazy town. But since we only have ten, if anything should go wrong with my tabulators, I don't have a backup. There's no backup in place. So I need to get another DS 200 purchased. And I also need a couple new poll pads. Ever since the 2020 presidential, voters have come out of the woodwork like they never have before. So everyone, there's an increase, every election it increases higher on the voter turnout. So with that, to for efficiency, to get more people checked in, more people voted, nobody wants to wait in the line, I need more poll pads. So we're also looking at increasing and purchasing three more poll pads. I did receive a quote on this and so this constitutes almost about twelve thousand dollars. And they do match the same equipment that we have. So we do have that in there. We have also had to purchase a new software and it's called Modus. Modus is amazing. It's a software that helps you organize everything from election, from the poll workers to the sites, to generating mailers and emails to the poll workers. It creates, and it's going to make David's life a lot easier. He helps me do the delivery home machines. So Modus is pretty cool. It runs thirty-eight ninety-four for that software.
You have that under the clerk though?
No, that's.
Or you just have that the note?
That's in elections. Mm-hmm. That's just in elections.
Okay, it's on the clerk's page. But it says that's courthouse contractual. Is that coming out of your budget or?
No, Modus is elections. This is Monsanto.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Monsanto is the website that we're required to have. It makes the website ADA compliant.
Okay.
And that is, I just wanted to add that tidbit. And we do do everything when it comes to the website. So I don't know, I just put that note over there because I don't know if you, since I do do that with my department for transparency reasons, if you want that to come out of my budget, that is not added into here. So I just put that side note there. And then the annual subscription for Civic Plus is five thousand two hundred and twenty. Okay. So if you want to add that, and I know for sure it needs to come out of contractual services for clerk, we can certainly do that. Or I guess that's just a hindsight note for you guys if you'd rather continue without a courthouse contractual, we can do that as well. But something that the clerk didn't have before and now I've taken on that additional role. Sorry, yes, they are similar.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I do.
Here's a moment, okay.
So with that third election, I basically, so for SOS, Secretary of State's Office, I had to comprise a list of what our cost for elections comes to. They had us do this before legislation was passed to even consider the March election. And so I already had these prepared Cowley goodies. So I took the totals of everything that we estimate as an expense or a cost. And I just divided that by two because it's the cost that was generated for last year for two elections. And then divide that by two, that gave me an each and it rounded about twenty-five thousand. So that's what that additional is for the March nineteenth. I just did a flat rate of twenty-five.
Supplies or is that manpower or it seems cheap?
It is very cheap. So I'm trying, so in reflection, anything that, I try to keep my budgets as tight as possible, especially with elections, because everything needs to be accounted for, obviously, and transparent. And purchases only from elections come out of elections. I'm trying to buy as many supplies this year to help compensate, to have a lower request for an increase next year. Now, I can only buy what I can buy, which would encompass envelopes, our blue cards that we print out that go out for motor registrations, forms, things like that. I can't pay for ballots, obviously, for next year. That's a huge expense. I can't program any of the media for the tabulators. Those are expenses for next year. Like you said, poll workers and things like that. Yeah.
Just like labor costs even within staff, like labor costs.
Right. It's low and I tried, like I've got, I've got plans. It's been on, it's on target right now. I hope this works out and that may be low. And if that's the case, you know, by statute, the county is obligated to make sure that we have elections paid for. But I'm trying to be savvy and hope that that's enough. Hopefully, I'm not, I'm not too low. I think I've done enough of them. I think I will be okay. I think we'll be okay. Any questions about that? No. No. Payroll. Payroll is the same amount as it has always been with the increase with the, for salary. I do have the employee benefits, health fare in here for open enrollment. And we put that at twenty-five hundred. I think that since we've started that again, that's been the targeted amount that we try to budget for that. And I think we've had good response. I know Cindy's got, I've kind of set her free on it. Last year was her first one under her belt and I think she did a really great job. And so now she's got new ideas and I know we've already started getting vendors scheduled for that day in October. I'm nervous. I realize there's a little bit of extra in personal services there probably. I do have that, a person out of clerk and elections that floats and helps payroll as they can. But it's a lot what Cindy does. You know, it's a lot for one person. It's never been one person. Conversations take long, that's time. Things like, I know she's still trying to help fix things with the May debacle. Cindy is an excellent employee and she works to make sure the job gets done. But I hate to see that personal services go away in case I need to get a second person in there. There's some things that we're still not doing as far as HR standpoint. There's some other programs and some different things, some extra time, some shutdowns that need to happen. But it's just stuff on the back burner. Yes, they're still necessary, but right now there's not enough time, there's not enough people. There's, we're just still trying. I think all of last year Cindy's priorities were to clean up.
Right, exactly.
To clean and fix.
She talked about more time, Heather.
I mean, I think we're getting there. I think as she gets her feet on solid ground and I think she's there, it may call for that. You know, right now we just have myself and my staffer helping as we can, but eventually we're, I think we're looking to, to meet somebody else. Okay. That's all we got.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Yeah. Actually, being nice, everyone go quick.
I'll go.
Okay.
I don't have a huge amount of changes. And I gave my budgets, two of them in to CAT, but I gave them in the wrong order. So I'd like you to withdraw the first one and look at the second one. For the most part, my contractual commodities haven't changed a whole lot. What I've done is I've shifted from the contractual and placed it down in the commodity area. But the overall amounts are pretty close to what we've been using. Some of that is just because of vehicle maintenance and fuel costs. And I think it's going to be something that we're probably way under budgeting for. But since it is in commodities, it can, it can pull from other areas. What I've got listed for office and field can be shifted over to fuel cost if it's necessary. So that's just kind of one of those gray areas that we just really can't perfectly budget for. My biggest concern this year is mostly in personal services. And I don't know what other offices are looking at, but I want to get a decent base rate for just base hiring and we're not there yet. But then I've got a couple of them that have been there longer that, I've got one that's making fifty cents more an hour more than my new person. And I think that's kind of an injustice that needs to be addressed. But also I've got some good new people that are showing some real promise on learning and catching on. I want to keep them. And that's been a problem. In fact, two people in the last five years have gone on. One took all of the education that we could give him and went to another county for seven dollars more an hour immediately. And that's, that's a tough one, just getting someone here that will stay. Because it takes years to garner all of the experience to be able to do everything that we need them to do. And I think just retention is my biggest problem in our office. So we've got four people in our office that have a collective sixty-two years of experience. And we are within four to eight years of retiring. And when that happens, we need someone to back that up that's, you know, got that experience and they're also adding to those years. So I think, I think wages is really our biggest thing. You know, we need to get at least our base rate where we hire looking better than, like two years ago it was thirteen fifty. And we all know that it's come up and you guys, that dollar an hour was a robust, really appreciated. But I think we're still not there yet. And that's what I'm looking at. But also getting some of our widened areas in my office. I can't speak to other offices, but we've got a real range. If you'll look at what our lowest is and our highest, I want to get those kind of more evened out where they're more fair for the years that they've been there, the experience that they've already got, the education levels that they've already garnered. But also as my new ones go up and get certifications and pass these classes and get education and experience, I want to be able to give them something to look forward to. Say if they pass this class, get this certification, that's another quarter, another fifty cents. Up to so much, like over a two-year period. I want, I want them to have something to look forward to. So I want to be able to build that in also.
Can I do?
Yeah. My deputy is not making what I made when I first moved into that position. I think that needs to be the bare minimum. I'd like her to give up to that. For myself, I realize I'm salaried, but I still have a mentality that works on a dollar per hour type thing. And when I look at the last fifteen months, I put in approximately twenty thousand dollars worth of additional labor that. I'm just saying that's why I'm justifying I am on my ass into three thousand for myself on a raise. So the work is putting, being put in. I do have some discussion that I want to have on my deputy. I know you guys have in the past not wanted to do salary on that. I'm not sure what the reasoning is on that. I would like to have some discussion about that. When I was deputy, I was salaried. My biggest thing on that is the ability to work away from here, not have to pay additional. We don't ever work away from here in lieu of coming in. So, so buying at home, I'm either taking sick time or I'm taking vacation time. That's something different for me because that's not how I was taught in the past and that's fine. I have had an adjusting period and I'm okay with that. But, but I would like, I would like it to be understood that we put in more hours than what, than what you see. And I can't afford to pay overtime. But there's, there are certain times of year, especially when we're setting values, that Samantha was more than willing to work. that Samantha was more than willing to work additional hours, but I couldn't do it because she's on salary. So that's, I'd like to bring her pay up a bit and make her salaried if I can get that done. Can that follow up?
That's definitely something to think about.
So Cat, in the book, is, the first page is without, do we need to disregard with hers?
So I presented two of them.
Yeah.
The first one is a one point five percent increase over the prior year. The one I'm asking you to consider is a four point seven percent increase over the prior year.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Tanya?
Let's see where you come from, Tanya, because I, we've had more turnover in the county in the last four, five years than I seen in twenty-five years. I own the county because you either passed away or you retired. You didn't quit staying. I wouldn't get back to that.
I agree. Yeah. All right, Melanie, do you want to go next?
Sure. Um, so I didn't have very many changes actually. I did add A D training, um, which upped my comparable, but my commodities went down because COVID was half of what we had, um, budgeted for last year. I had two thousand three A D training. I'll make it go to that in, uh, conference next year somewhere. And I did add an increase in question cases. And I, that's my, uh, pay is paid by department by grant match. So really if you, um, if the pay you're only paying so much. Worst thing they'll say is that, right? That was my model. Um, I didn't really have much other changes. I did go down a little bit on, I did go up on tires, but tire department I have.
While there was a consensus.
Yeah, everybody agreed on it.
That's never.
Not funny when you say that. It's very odd when you do that yourself, but.
Any questions?
Me or my department?
So do we have to sign your contract every year with this, or the state contract?
My, yeah.
Yeah. Where half your salary is paid. I know we've signed that before.
Yeah, we already got it for, I mean, we, you know, I've already gotten for last year. We started that process here shortly. That one for this year. They're just paying, it'll go down slightly. It could be pandemic since COVID has been on. Because there was a little bit of extra, I think it was like twenty-five thousand last year. All right. I would imagine it'll probably go down to twenty-three. And I've seen this inside my, so. That's all I know. I don't, whatever the state decides to keep down. That's all I have.
Their staff's all right with this.
Well, maybe if you'd like to. Me and my staff are good. We don't need a vehicle at some point. I guess my truck is ten. I will throw that out there. When Greg gets rid of some vehicles, it's, it's fine with what it is. Whenever he gets one that I would like to have, so. Me and my book, of course. But really appreciate, um, we really appreciate Greg.
My next. Good luck. If you had questions, I'd like to apologize if I didn't.
I realize our personal services hired a lot of departments. So, well, we, but you look at the actual load chart of how many people are on duty at a time to cover a twenty-four hour period, so this week. That's pretty limited. I don't really want to point out where we're short, but we have three deputies short, four Javers short. We're four Javers short, but we've got another, put them in notice. It's a perpetual problem, it's a safety issue. We split the county by Jackson Road, deputy on the east side and west side. It's been that way for, since I started in ninety-eight. I worked a lot of years on night shifts, the only deputy for the entire county. There are kids that really aren't so comfortable with that. I don't want to point out where we're short and what shifts we're short. Criminals pay attention to that. And then we split, ended in midlife with our sergeant, patrol sergeants. The two lieutenants are detectives. And so changes from last year on the budget. I didn't change any of the contractual commodities for the jail or the sheriff's office. Um, it's the exact same as what it was last year. As far as the personal services. And the actual proposed budget part. I only put in what your retroactive raise was for this year that wasn't already earmarked. And I tried to break that down, to explain it as much as possible. There's a huge difference between twenty-four seven employees and eight hour employees. My guys don't get overtime until after they work eighty-six hours. But we pay shift differential, if one, which is all by statute is required. We try to limit our overtime as much as possible. Keep in mind, just in the last six months, we had two homicides and a human skull that we're investigating. And we have a dead body dumped here. Those investigations take a lot of my work. I'm including the one that I've been working for quite some time. I doubt there's any sheriff that works as many hours as I do. I, if I come across grumpy today, I'm sorry, I'm two and a half hours asleep, which is pretty common. A lot of them are getting murdered. We just lost one of the people that we've invested a lot of money into for training. We try to get them to, uh, child forensic interview classes. One I lost was my firearms instructor guide that I have to have. That's all investment that I've got now started over again. Because we didn't keep that kid. So as far as the budget goes, nothing's changed other than the increase from what the retroactive raise was. And then I did what an hour, a dollar an hour and two dollars an hour would end up costing if you added that in. But that's still a fraction compared to what neighborhood counties are making. We have agencies that are calling my staff, trying to push. There's agencies that are across the state, it's a statewide problem. Because who wants to work in law enforcement right now? And in this county, a lot of them were in the news all the time. Because who has any faith in our judicial system here? So who wants to come here? And I realize we've given some money back because we don't waste it. In December, I usually try to buy supplies and tires and stuff the next year on the state bid. We haven't bought any of the extra stuff that we kind of need. Thank Heather for buying me a new chair. Because I never would have.
I surprised them, like you are not sitting in that chair anymore.
We have a new judge that is, I would anticipate our jail number is probably going to increase. She tries to clean up stuff. And we have a murder suspect in North Carolina that, he's done with his stuff there. We're going to do transport. We've already done numerous transports across the nation already this year. Up until recently, when the judge got involved, we were holding people after they were sentenced. County's dying, waiting on journal entries for extended periods. So all that cost the county tax payers. And hoping there's some changes that are soon. I don't mean the first to say that. Next year's election year, we want to actually get somebody to run for that office that's got some integrity. Probably going to need to get it to where it's competitive for an attorney to take that job. Because most of the decent ones in the world, it's going to be all painted up. I remember working with life teasing after he's been there four years. New judge starts keeping more people in jail. You know, five inmate increase makes a huge difference on the meal costs and those type of things. And the company we conquer just keeps refreshing that up because they can get, um, food cheaper. So still way cheaper than, than back when the commission made this cut ten percent of our budget. We lost our kitchen staff. That became contractual service, the biggest savings there is. Don't have the benefits, so. And our medical bill, except one of the hospitals last night. I take that short staff already and then I have to run a twenty-four seven shift in a hospital guarding somebody. And we, a little over a month ago, had to send two deputies to rotate at K U Med for a guy that had a warrant. You know, the crime had occurred fourteen or sixteen months before they issued a warrant, filed charges on him. Then they held the warrant for four months before sending him over to N C I C. Now all of a sudden it's crisis and the guy gets arrested in a jurisdiction, gets shipped to K U Med and we have to instantly send people up. We don't have staff. We can't recover the rip. And I realize you guys get complaints about traffic at every detour there is. When the bridge is out, we're going to have to seriously reconsider where we're going to put our staff. Maybe a north-south deputy instead of an east-west. Because the river should explode response time. There's a lot more that goes into our office than, and we're mandated by law, a lot of our stuff. Cameras to interview people. State goes, you know, we've already got a live scan in, in the jail for inmates. Most of those teachers, um, um, they don't want to go back there because our inmates now are just doing like they used to be. So they don't want somebody screaming and yelling at them and cussing at them exposing themselves to them, to the glass while they're in the booking area and use that machine. But I didn't include any of those capital improvements because I knew you guys were covering a new million short on that project. And we're considering taking what we had as many out of that pilot minute earmarked for one mission. Or the, or the building. Yeah, I realize it's there and people complain about that for some reason. It built interest and paying for several projects all the years that there wasn't immediate crisis to come up because the money was there. And I would thank people to understand that. They look at those accounts and the money is sitting there for a while, building interests. As far as the, sort of, so the jail and the sheriff, nothing changed contractual or commodity. The security one, I still don't have, uh, a bid for the other one. That's due tomorrow, so I'll probably sign it when I get back. And it'll be good for two years. They're still, it just locks in the rate. They get somebody there when we have to have them.
So the security has a count of your budget this year. Is that coming up then?
The security budget?
Yeah.
That contract is due tomorrow, so I'm going to have to sign it.
Okay.
That's where that's going to come from.
Okay.
So, um, it won't be that much following year. Probably still need something in there to cover, you know, them coming here. Because to cover, that budget doesn't just cover the sheriff's office, it covers the work out, state position stuff. So if there's changes made up there, potential changes made up there, probably going to have to consider putting money in the budget for that if, if there. If your discussions with the judge or anybody else is going to include that sort of stuff. Because that'll be on top of this. I mean, that will be additional.
Currently, uh, most of court, are they, as if they ask for a deputy to be there or?
We have, if you look at, we have two court deputies. However, there's three courtrooms and occasionally, so typically one of the, uh, lieutenants is going to cover the third court.
That was my question. How, how, how can you get in all the court with their coverage of deputy during hours?
And if they're not in court, they're usually servants of the property. And like police departments, we have a lot of extra duties that they don't have. We serve thousands of victims here. Lord five male man, I guess. Or, and our papers, we have served, kept people out of their homes. And sheriff sales and all that good stuff. Which is not a positive part of the salary at all. Has to be done. Police department does not have to do it. And our budget is still way less than just for the police officers and what you need adds for just the police department in the news. This at least give me an idea. We don't have any extra staff. If we were full staff, this is what those positions would look like. I did take a part-time person out of the last year's budget presentation. If you still got that, a part-time person from jail. We made her full-time. We didn't have that position filled with the one person from jail. We made her a, a full-time secretary to help with e-filing and e-warranting that we got stuck with mid-year. And it just keeps, we just get more to have all the time. We don't have the e-fileer, we want it's, we're the rest one. So they have to go through, if you have access to that system. There's plenty for them to do, but it was way too much for this plan. We don't want to, um, say caught up and she went for a third year and thought I was going to take vacation. Jail administrator having to cover duties on top of growing. I don't think we're heavy on staff by any means.
But your retention, your expensive training is astronomical for retraining.
The less the kids that have been at, exciting with the academy, been out less than a year. She knew, lost one in the street fire. The one that really hurt, had the most training and actually a few years of service. In Bed County, they didn't help it. We had, they have great work with, we get along, really good with them. For them to hear what they're making. Four people make ten thousand dollars or more a year than I do. Sheriff in Allen County and Bed County makes thirty thousand more. You know, I'm not as worried about me as, as these kids. I'm not going to have anybody. Just start following the goal.
Okay. Lori, talking about twenty-four seven.
Honestly, just continue on. I totally agree with everything Greg says. You know, twenty-four seven is a whole different beast. It just is, it just, we, there's no shutting down. There's on-call all the time. In my budget, my, pretty much my contractual went up a little bit due to, um, there's gonna be some increases. I broke out some of my phone, or excuse me, my phone services, so I kinda brought those out. That's why there's a new internet line in there. Increase in Omnigo, it's a CAD contract I happen to have. So there is about a ten thousand dollar increase on that. Uh, come on, or that's contractual, sorry. Um, on, um, I guess we're on one twenty-six, sorry about that, I should've said that. And then on commodities, um, it stayed the same. You know, that's kind of a guessing game, what equipment I'm gonna need each year and have to replace and things like that. So there's not a lot of changes on my nine-one-one phone, except for the breakout. So it did go up. We're pulling in from the state approximately about forty-eight thousand now versus what we used to, so it's paying about half. So it's, you know, that's quite a chunk for us to pick up. But, so I do try to keep things really tight and I try to fix as much as I can, whether it's radio stuff or whatever, without calling in people. So some of it I can fix on my hand. But anyway, so there's not a lot of changes other than I knew that a couple of the contracts was, uh, was gonna be going up. So any questions on that? No. All right. General, uh, the nine-one-one dispatch. Um, again, there was a few extras, um, that I had to, like, Code Red, uh, for me went up because of the split, even though it came down, but it did go up. And then we've added an NCIC interface system for dispatch. And the antivirus is, uh, and I'm anticipating it going up, so I kinda estimated on it. So that went up approximately five thousand. The commodities kinda just left him the same. You know, I've been staying within budget on that, so I figure, um, we can make that work. On the employees, um, I did give increases and I kinda faced it off, um, what were I'm competing with, whether it's Lebek County, whether it's Shunut and Allen and a few places. And I felt that was really in line. Um, what we do is not an easy job. I know you see it on TV and they're all frame proper and they're answering the phones and stuff. But we do a lot of things behind the scene too. We manage approximately eight hundred warrants, more so now we have a new judge, they're coming in by the stacks. And, um, just within the last few weeks, um, I've been dispatching quite a little bit, filling in because I'm too short. Possibly gonna be three, I just heard that through the grapevine. Um, so I can tell you in the last two weeks, I've handled, uh, a meth overdose, or excuse me, a fentanyl overdose, a blue baby. And one of my employees, um, had a very serious suicidal call. Luckily she tucked him down, got him to actually take the gun away from his head and gave it to his wife. Which I'm very proud of her because it's hard. But those are very, um, hard things to handle. Especially most of us in here are parents, when you have a blue baby, six months old, and you have someone screaming at you, and that's from the moment you pick up that phone. That's what I think so hard about our job is every phone call we take, we never know what we're getting. And your, your blood pressure can go from normal to skyrocketing in seconds. And, or it could be somebody wanting to know what time Walmart's open, you know, it, you just never know it. And, um, it's a hard job. I had, um, one of my employees tell me that she worked trauma, um, for eighteen years. And she said, this is worse than working trauma. And I said, what? And she said, because there you're, it's hands-on, you, you're taking control, you're doing it on the phone, you're trying to figure out what's going on. Trying to get answers out of them and get everything the officers need to keep them safe. And it is so hard because people are screaming. And I, I worry about burnout, I have several that's getting pretty burnt out. And I make them sure they have days off and stuff, but for what they, they have to do, yeah, we're not even close to being in line with the other counties. We're just not. And I'm not underestimating anybody else's job, we all work hard. But there is a lot of stress with my department, sheriff's office and jail. And I did do a hierarchy for you guys, um, on how, this is how a dispatch is supposed to look. And what ours looks like. This is the normal hierarchy. And for the last three years, I've asked for help. I'm dispatching as much as I'm trying to work in my office. That's what it looks like, this is what ours looks like. Um, it's, it's something that really, really needs to be considered. Because right now, if you look at the hierarchy, there's five positions that's not filled on the normal. And it's me. And it's tough to keep up, I'm not gonna lie to you. Last weekend, I worked all midnights, turned around, come back in. I have, you know, it's hard to keep up with everything in my office and what's required. And there's a lot of new stuff coming down the pipeline. I'm missing meetings I should be going to because I can't do it all. And so I do worry about that. And so I am asking in my budget for an assistant. It's over needed. When I was under the sheriff's office, there was two of us that ran dispatch. And, um, we took turns with on-call. Right now, I'm down to one person helping me with on-call, so I'm stuck in this county three weeks out of the month. You know, missing a lot of things. It'd be nice to be able to holler at someone and say, can you take calls for me? You know, so I can go to my grandkids' baseball game that's, we don't have in county. So, um, there's just a lot going on. I don't know how we fix the problem. And three people apply, one showed up for testing. And the one that's possibly gonna be leaving, it's because she wants days. And seniority-wise, I can't do that. So I, I, I don't have the answers. I have moved all my seasoned, um, seasoned experience, gives me experienced staff, put one on each shift. So I know I have somebody that has a good experience with some of the more newer than newer ones. Other than that, and then I fill in everywhere else. So, not a good situation. Got questions? Oh, and as for my salary, just like Greg and I'm sure jail and everything else, I'm about thirteen thousand under what the others are giving. And they have assistant directors.
Well, unfortunately, I can't give them more. Thank you, David.
I know you did call, thank you.
Dave?
It's first. I guess I'll be good. I did make a couple of minor adjustments here to my just be careful on mine. My contractual services did go down. What, what I tried to do with my commodity stuff and the longer I'm here, the braver I get working on systems and experiencing new things. I got out of jail, that was an entire new system that I never got to see before, so. The plumbing wise and learning how to do that and buying a couple of tools to be able to maintain that kind of stuff. I, I do buy quite a few tools. Just after projects come along, it's something that I need, if the tool's two hundred dollars, but the service has found it out, then I would just buy the tool and try to get it done. With that being said, I, let me back up just a hair. There is an oversight on my wellness side. On my bottom line, I, there should have been an overtime number in there for around thirty-five hundred dollars. I remember putting that in, but for somebody that didn't quite know these, that always figure.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
Is there?
I don't see it online.
We've got it.
I got a line through my overtime.
They got it.
Okay, so maybe I got a different copy.
I see it, they got it.
So I may be working off a couple different numbers here, but.
For a total of eighty-five, six sixty for the year?
Or?
What's the total for the year then, with overtime?
Total?
Eight.
That I had figured with my overtime is one thirty-four, one forty-nine, fifteen. But I don't have the overtime on my sheet. I got, have you got one?
What is your salary for your personal services?
Yeah, yeah, I don't care. So we might be working off a couple different sheets, but we're, we've done a couple hundred dollars.
This is what you screwed, we spent more.
I know, and I printed that up and I didn't notice it until.
But you have access to this, you can redo it and give it back to them.
I can do that.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we have overtime, I feel, so it should be right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Good, thanks, okay, I'll print it in your app.
Thank you. But, um, this being said, I, with my contractual and from, from lottery standpoint, it's the same. I am asking for a significant increase on personal services. And trust me, I bothered me to do this, but I have some proof that showing that schooling and training, you know, is a benefit to the county. And people that do go and do trainings, that is an expense that the county puts into the employees and then it stays with the county. And in my trainings and stuff, it's stuff with me when I entered the job force. And what I get paid is not what your typical electrician or your former, or, you know, an HVAC guy is not even close to what they get paid. And I do take into consideration the benefits and then job security and that kind of stuff. But I have went and looked up like an average across the state, what the sanitaryans make. And then I took into account what we paid a contracted sanitaryian before I could go for this position. And the numbers were huge, I've got some, a couple things. This is just a breakdown of what they make across the state in average. And just for the sanitaryian, they're applying lower than what I make go maintenance and sanitaryian. And then another sheet I give you there is, I didn't wanna take that case into clerk's time, but I had given me a bunch of expense reports. So I just chose one major company that we deal with. And with CDL, over the time that I've been here, and what I was able to understand in some of these expense reports, because I'm not good with all this stuff, but. I've been able to shave roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars over the last, you know, five years. Expense reports off of what we pay them, just based on what I do and what I'm willing to tackle. The expense report that you have, or the sheet that I give you there. So in two thousand nineteen, the, I'm trying to break down purchases and labor. And some of these numbers may not be exact, but I do have a little porch to back it up. So two thousand twenty, when I started, was the total expenses was seventy-seven thousand for the year for CDL. And you take off any purchases or sparks money, anything, which is what I think is how this stuff is broke down. The labor cost was, was only forty-four thousand. And over the next few years, as I've tried to tackle more and more stuff, I brought that number down to under ten thousand dollars a year. So far over this year, I'm like, well, we've only spent twenty-five hundred dollars with CDL. And I'm hoping to see that number come down a little more as part of my tool purchases. Because right now, we don't have anything dealing with refrigeration or tools, I don't have gauges, vacuum pumps, any of that. And that is what I went to school for, but I'm trying to avoid buying that, some of that stuff is real expensive. But if I can at least start getting some gauges, I'm certified to buy a refrigerant. So if I'm able to start tackling some of the refrigerated air conditioning issues, that, that number's gonna keep coming down. And I, I've been trying to express to people that I can handle, you know, the heating side of things pretty well, because there's no special tools. But trying to use my experience and my schooling that I have, is what I am asking for this raise for. Yeah, I don't know what I got. Terrible office work, but. And this is just with CDL, I, I do a lot of things for each department. I got assisted at the jail and Brandy's office for cleanup and replacement floor and trying to do as much of that work in-house as we can. Um, I'm assisting health department with, you know, this trailer that we're working on. And these expenses could get larger if we use a contractor to do it. I try to assist in building or repurposing maybe different things for different offices that need, I would say counter space. I don't know if you've been in the Carlos's office, I, I did build that counter in there that I was able to give it a buyer in that office. And something like that, you know, you can spend several thousand dollars on, and it may not be exactly what you want, so. I guess what I'm getting at is I'm, I'm trying to do more stuff in-house so we don't have to hire out the contractors. And just on CDL. And just on C D L alone, you can see that the numbers look like that. And I didn't want to go through all the other people we may use or even the expenses that we may have with equipment, counter space, you know, whatever. I can go further than that if you want to see it, but like I said, I was trying to keep the books off the support to a minimum, so I just did one contractor. Uh, that's not counting, you know, possibly white swan hanging or I'm not real sure who Judicial Center uses a lot, I know they use C D L on some staff and line platters on others, but trying to keep those costs down and get more involved in that part of it. Just to keep the contractual expenses down in each department. Like I said, just on C D L, since I've been here, to bring that number down over thirty-five thousand dollars a year is I'm proud of that, and I hope it helps other departments, but that is why I'm asking for is a significant raise, because I did take on another position as a sanitaryian too. And dealing with the public certainly adds a stress factor to your job. And I'm not, I'm not a person.
It's a new aspect of your job.
I, I'm not a person that deals with public well, whenever, I don't know what you're talking about. I am the lowest paid department head in the county at the moment. And I am the only hourly paid department head at the moment, so I haven't been brought up to the gallows. But and I'm not good at public speaking, so that could be all I got to say.
Well, we do appreciate what you're doing. We finally had to ask, like, can you give us a detailed list of what you do, because every time you come here, it's like, where's Dave? You know, but I know you're out working in different parts of the county and it really does show, so.
No, we'll be back on that report. It's something that, it does take time to do that, so. And if you skip a day or forget a day or whatever, it's hard to look back and try to remember what you did those days. And, and keeping some of that, I am, I am a mechanical inclined person. Sometimes at your ballpark, the landscaping stuff, I have looked into having some awesome ways for people to do some landscaping. I might have the extension office working on some where they come through for less credit. Um, I'm not good at keeping plants alive, but I don't find it easy. But I can keep the water running, I can keep the building cool, so.
The weeds look really good out there.
But.
That's why I like grass, you just blow it down.
I'm working on the garden, so.
All, all, all the shrubbery causes more labor.
If I can round up everything and just put down sand, I can make it look good. Yeah.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, Kathy?
Okay, so, um, in fact, you know, commodities, so keep it simple. And now changing, changing with the personal services. Since I'm in an office, I have tried to bring it to the attention of the commission. Uh, my position is paid usually between ten and fifteen thousand dollars less than what the other department heads and and elected officials are paid. So I'm still trying to get that, you know, within the ballpark, you know, just within the ballpark. And I just gave you guys a list of wages and I color-coded, um, each position up to my office comparative with position in our office. And as you see, we are consistently paid a lot less. It helped with, um, my deputy and the clerk of my office with the raise you gave them this past year helped considerably. To get them up close to everyone else. My deputy, she goes above and beyond what she, she a lot of times. I'm going to see her. I've had people come in and offer her jobs, especially within the legal community, because she's got a lot of experience there. And she knows a lot, just some of the legal stuff that we did. So, I'd like to see her up to the list. So other than that, everything, um, it seems like we've forced with high interest rates, uh, refinancing and everything has stopped some of the mortgages being reported. Uh, but we're still getting a lot of deeds in. Uh, it seems like houses are still selling, it's just nobody's refinancing or something like that. So I'm looking at some of that, she brings in more money when you have twenty-page documents versus two-page documents, so. So that makes a big difference there. And I was going to print all that stuff out and get it to you, but I'll, I'll print it off and, and send it to you through email. I know where we're at the past couple of years and stuff. Questions? Okay, I'm pretty much everything you say.
Uh, I want to talk a little bit about the end of my year, which happens to be tomorrow. We, so our grant year rounds up tomorrow. Uh, we have several things that we've got for the next hopefully ten years is my goal. Our service should last ten years, our general should last a lot longer than that and different things. David is, uh, working on our trailer. And so on the trailer, we budgeted forty-five hundred dollars to have everything put in. I, he's worked on this at his home in the evenings at times. And so we thought what was left, whatever we did not spend, we could, um, pay him because he did it on his own time at times. Okay. Okay.
I want to, you give me more time to work on it, I have not.
By today? Okay. We have to have a couple of months. A couple of months. So that's where we're at with that right now, that's kind of what we want to do. That's what I've budgeted for that, he said we spent about three thousand or so. I thought that was a good number. Found out, so then the next thing is, I have been approved by the state for two TVs. One in here, and I, I'm going to say that why? Because when we do, uh, weather and stuff, if we have people down here, if they could pick that up, it might think, especially for meetings that are different things. And then we've got one for the, she's going to get one for the lobby. And so I'd like permission to go ahead and get those since today. So we can have that for emergencies.
We can't authorize anything in this meeting?
No, but I was telling, I budgeted for it, so, um, I hope that that would be okay to do that. Because, uh, the, I've budgeted for it through with our grants, so everything we do is touch, touches a grant. So, um, we have a new grant coming up called workforce development, and the focus of that is retention. So, um, I did give them a raise, but I would like to make that substantially different. About everybody works a second job of some kind in my staff. And I would like for they did not have to do that. We, so let me talk about my, um, family etiquette. We had a person that was homeless. We were able to, and we deal with that quite a bit, we were able to set up them in a home, get them food and get them the necessities that we needed. And that's a different kind of things we do, nobody actually sees, you know? Or to get the mental health help, nobody actually sees that. Or to get the lady on the bus that's been sitting in our lobby for four hours, talking to herself because she needs to get down a bama. That stuff we do that we're not really realizing we're going to do that day, but we do it because they're there. And so we do a lot of different things, I think we're out of our wheelhouse, but if they walk through the door, it's not out of our wheelhouse, we do it. And, um, sometimes that's interesting and sometimes that's challenging. Uh, we, um, would like to get mental health in there. And I think our biggest thing that we got, which I'm very thankful for for the commission, we got security. Because it is not uncommon for us to house somebody that is getting ready to go to open ended. We keep them in our offices, because sometimes they don't know where they're going, they're with us. And, um, that's always interesting, you know? Because they might be a while and they're going to stay there with, they're going to stay in our office. So the lockdown we got and everything was very much appreciated. The, um, panic buttons were very good for us. Because that's something that we don't typically do. We think we do shots and family planning, but it's all the other stuff we're not expecting that's so interesting and scary at times. I, uh, we have a homeless population. And, um, that has been brought up about how we handle that. I have thought of many ways. And some I think are good and some I don't know, but that's a concern that we want to be able to work with, is to help the homeless population move in. So that's something we want to be able to do next year. Um, and suicide is way out, and of course, they call that a public health epidemic. And I'm going to be honest with you, I don't know how we're doing that. It's not even in our wheelhouse right now. But they have made it a public health epidemic for us. So I would like to send, uh, my goal is to start getting us all trained in that field, so if somebody tells us that, we're able to know exactly what to do. So I was, I'm going to, uh, because of the new grant, workforce development, I would like to definitely ask for long-term raises and try, try to get a higher raises for my staff and myself.
COVID funds, as they come out, all the grants, how much does that affect your budgeting thousands worth?
The COVID funds?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to be honest with you, I like, so I have about eighty thousand dollars left of COVID funds. I think it will do a little bit, but see, the workforce development's coming right on top of this. And there's other grants I can apply for. It's not that there's a shortage of grants, because we're always applying for grants. At, because we want to be grant-based, that's our goal. I mean, every one in my office is grant-based, nobody works without a grant, including myself. And I think sometimes with our grant, we're going to have to think outside the box and say, can we do this? And yes, we can. And so I think that there's several grants I could probably apply for, or could have applied for, that would be beneficial to us, to because our goal is we work for the people and the community. So if they walk in the door, we're like, okay, how do we help you? And if it's out of our wheelhouse, we need to be trained on that.
I just, I, I understand the grant base, part of it wanting to be self-sufficient with that, but some, they come to you. How does that, if you can't afford that grant within another grant, what actually comes to pay that salary? That, that's my ultimate worry is.
No, I understand that, you're right, because, but one of the things in the twenty-two year revenue year, there's always been a grant to sustain us. And, um, I know WIC is a hundred, raise a hundred percent. You know, WIC, WIC has even agreed to, uh, help us with the rebuilding, but, you know, things like that. But those are few and far between. The feds have the money, they have a ton of money they're investing in fam, in families and WIC right now. Huge amounts of money, I don't know where they're getting all the dollars, but. What?
The printing.
Well.
There are, that, that's the same country we live in when we pay our taxes, they're just giving it back to us. In a smaller portion.
Nick, I totally agree with that, I think they are giving it back to us. But the thing about it is, is we want to use it here to benefit our own citizens. You know, we want to use it here to benefit our own citizens instead of letting them take it somewhere else.
As I don't suffice to, if it's out there, let's spend it.
Well, we don't have any choice.
I know, I know, I just, I understand, Teresa, it's just certain things you come to a limit of your capabilities or programs that you can actually offer.
That's why we need better training, so we are able to handle those, handle those different things that walk through our door. Because some of them's easy, like getting a woman on a bus was fairly easy. There's other things that are not easy for us.
I agree, sometimes your heart's a little too, as we've had this discussion of empathy and sympathy. You cross that, you might have over-sympathy, but the empathy has to stop at some point or it develops your health, your life. That's, as you know, you, if you swallow all that need of somebody else, it will pull you into their realm and you'll start eating you up inside. And Lori's a key example, I mean, you swallow some of the things they experienced, Greg, you got, there's got to be a cutoff. It's not, not being, understanding of the situation, but you can't hold it all in or you're, you're helping go.
I sort of took your words to heart that day, and I'm really trying to work on that. I just don't know how to write down, I'm still trying to figure that one out.
There's lots of good classes out there.
And not just you and your staff also, I mean, they're, they're limited as to what we can do, we got to stay focused on, on what, you know, are the needs.
But you've got to remember, we just come back from a meeting and they said suicide's a public health epidemic and, uh, mental health is a public health issue. Okay.
Can, I have a, I have a question. Can your grants, you know, some of the things you said, like TVs or furniture or something, are your grants only tailored to the building in Chanu that you and your staff are in? Or can some of your grants help tailor that encompasses the entire county?
Of course.
Besides just services outside of what you guys administer?
That's why one of the things, I talked to Heather about this, we got permission to get an electric sign. And I said, and that would be for emergencies, so if there was like COVID again, you could post things about our department or any department on that electric sign. That was supposed to be done, I'll be honest with you, I really dropped the ball on that one, because we've had so many other things going, I just dropped the ball on that one. And I do apologize for that.
I wanted to bring it up for that reason, Teresa, I just meant that I think there might be a, um, a misconception that sometimes that your things are just for your office only, but they can be used to tailor other aspects in the house.
No. Sure, and it's for the grants for to help the people. However, we need to, and that's what we've got these for. I mean, we got, um, this year we got all, um, I'm going to get all handles, let me see. U H B grant where we go out into homes and visit with parents. U H B grant where we go out into homes and visit with parents. And that was very exciting and intimidating at times.
So it's exciting all that's coming down, there's so many more health needs than there used to be, I think, with mental health and different things, and I think we just need to stay focused on what our limits are and what we wanna focus on. And however you commit, even though you can get grant money, doesn't mean that it's gonna benefit anyone if you can't administer that grant well.
I, I do just not understand, I guess my thought process is, I know it's a grant you can get, but I guess my thought process is if I can learn, we can help them. And I know what you're saying, maybe that's not our wheelhouse, maybe it's not, I don't know. But I don't ever wanna turn anybody away that we tell it's not, that's not what we are trained to do. And that's not what you want me to do, they're in our county, we need to help them, that's our job.
But why wouldn't you call, I mean, if somebody came in and said, I'm really wanting to hurt myself, why wouldn't you call law enforcement and allow them to do whatever?
Some of them, and we do, we will call, we have called. Mental health also. Um, but some of them are afraid of law enforcement and I, I have my, I hate that. But we always try to find them a spot if we need to, no, some we can help. But we do refer them on, yes. But it's that initial, what we do, oh no, you know, that I wanna get past.
Can you give me a little bit of respect here from our, who deals with it constantly? Law enforcement is one of the few that has the ability to thank somebody in the emergency protection group. So we have to, we get people in the jail all the time. And our policies are, we have to be contracted, that's the game, well, they come down, they are the licensed psychologists or whatever that screen them. They recommend emergency treatment, which can only happen in Larnor or Osawatomie if they're in custody. But there are parts of the county attorney to file care and treatment. Those aren't absent and they haven't for three years. So we end up having to let people out the front doors if we know could cause harm to themselves or somebody else, because he's refused to, to bother. It just, it's a crisis in our county and if it's all of us in a super bad position, I guess he's the one that's working for it.
And the thing about public health is the biggest thing we have is trust and they have to trust us. They have to be able to trust us. And so if they say, I'm gonna stay here for, I'm gonna be for six hours, but they get, they stay. We will feed them, we'll do everything we need to make sure we can get them where they need to go. And we've done that twice this year already.
So my question always with your budget is, if you're going to get these grants, but yeah, you're increasing your budget. I mean, it, it, your, your budget should stay pretty steady. If the grants are paying for.
You still have to show everything you spend. I don't want you guys to be disillusioned by what I spend, that's why we do that. Uh, no, my grant can pay for a lot of things, most of this, but.
I guess that's always the question of how much is the grant paying? Because all I see is a, a large increase in your department.
Right, but see the grants cover this, I could do a breakdown of what they cover. I'm assuming we're going to get quite a bit if they don't take the COVID funds also, so like.
But you don't really know until the second half of the year, correct, what grants you receive? Are you just now applying for the grants?
No, we applied for grants in January, we get the notice sometime, we're supposed to have it by now because we start July one as our first grant, we started as a grant, uh, session July one. But they have spent all, they have sent all turnaround factors, if that makes any sense. And then uh, COVID nineteen, COVID I P three, COVID, COVID I P four, asked for adjustments. So we went in and did a bunch of adjustments, that's why we got, well, I think last year I said I was gonna get, and pretty much I've gotten everything I said I was going to get, except for I did put the sign on and that didn't work out.
Well, I just, I note that, you talk about the COVID, I just seen how the state of emergency gone. Those funds, what I listen to the federal side, they're going to recoup.
Yes, they are, they're gonna take it back.
Going on back, so you can't rely on those funds for.
No, I'm not relying on those funds, I know they're gone. Um, that's why we did, got so much we did this year, that's why we got a server, that's what we got, we knew, uh, computers. Things I know we're gonna need for five more years or eight more years. Um, but as for grants, we have, there's several grants I can apply for, but we don't have the manpower. I do think we're gonna have to do some different things, but the workforce development grant is the biggest grant we're getting right now. Um, that will start December thirty, no, I'm sorry, December one for us. And so if you look, a good example is, um, most, all of our hotel training and stuff like that comes out of a grant. All of our meds, those are private meds, that's really not inaccurate. But I want you guys to see what we spent, so you know that. If I just put what the grants will pay, I can do that, which is why I gave you the sheet. If you have my sheet still, uh, let's see. So I'm expecting about, um, four hundred thousand and grants or more. And of course, that depends on the feds also.
Those grants don't cover your day-to-day, uh, what's the word, just your day-to-day business, right?
Yes.
Expenses, it doesn't?
Yes.
They do.
Yes.
So like, you have a grant that pays for your, just looking at your budget, your rent, your utilities, it covers those things?
Yes, yes. Yes.
So I guess my question is, if a grant is paying for those things, then maybe, those would be reimbursements, right? So why, why does that grant money, hold on, let me, if the grant money is coming in to pay for those expenses, then why are we levying mills to cover these same expenses? It's a dual, it's a dual grab.
No, it's not, it is not, because we still pay a certain amount off of that. So it is a.
Pay a certain amount off of that.
So we have a guarantee and a match. So we, that match is where we get this money, because we have to get a certain amount of, um, tax.
But, but I go ahead and say, so we're actually having to levy taxes at a rate.
For a match.
I know, but we're chasing the dollars you wanna spend in your grant money.
So if you look on twenty-two.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean, I mean, where is the middle ground where we are, are, are meeting in the middle flush? So we're not levying extended amounts of funds that aren't necessarily needed, but constant overlaps into the next year?
So if you look on twenty-two, you'll see that her revenue.
Grace, you're very confusing, I'm not picking on you, I'm just trying to understand.
No.
Yeah, we're all, I mean, I've never tried to understand this yet, her. Your revenue for the health department was four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, her expenses were four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So you actually have, revenue was fifty thousand dollars.
And again, as you remember, that goes into a special fund for emergencies.
Page number two of, yeah.
Yeah, so Heather, part of, we have to, we have to have a certain mill, I don't know what you guys call it, but a certain amount of tax dollars levied for us to be able to not lose some of that grant dollar.
But Theresa, is your, is your budget already reduced down to that match only? They have to prove it is. Or are you adding in the grant dollars?
Okay, so when I do my budget, I do for what we spend and that's how I was trained, I do for what we spend. Because I don't wanna say a hundred thousand dollars and I just spend four hundred thousand dollars and have a chat. So.
I think this is something we need to address again with our new auditor, because it's always confusing to me because you're coming with this large increase and this large amount, but yet you're saying, well, I'm gonna have this much revenue. So how does that, how does that figure out here and when we're trying to levy taxes?
So, what'd you say, I spent, I got four hundred eighty-eight grants and, and we did four thirty-nine, that's kinda how that worked, if that makes any sense. We're using grant dollars and we're also using some match.
Okay, I don't think we can solve our questions here, but I think it's still something that needs to be looked at.
But it shows. Yeah, it shows, I guess my question would be, it shows two hundred percent used, which is twice as much, that's why I'm confused a little bit.
Yeah. You're, you're, yeah, you're using, that's why I'm looking at it.
Using twice as, do you see, I don't know how to explain it, but.
Okay, and see, that's my issues, because see, I work on two grant years. So I work on the county years and I work on the grant year.
Right.
And that's why it always seems like it's over, because my year ends, as you know, tomorrow.
Right.
And I start a brand new year, so that's where the confusion comes in.
Right.
Let's see, the budget in, um.
Anyway, yes, it's just something that needs to be explained by an auditor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are we doing that correctly?
Well, in half of this budget, half of this amount is your personal services. I don't think your commodities and contractions are off cantor. You know, I think they're, they're where anybody else's department would be and with the staff that you have. It's just getting to where it's confusing to understand where your grant money starts and where the, the tax dollars are being at, yeah.
So, gosh, we're about, so what?
Taking advantage of the grant money in the budget process.
So what I try to do, some grants have no match at all. Some grants have no match at all. Um, some grants have a ten percent match, some grants have a twenty percent match. Some grants have a forty percent match, every grant is different. Um, so we figure, and I think one of the benefits for us is, see, we, we'll get, so we already got, I don't know if this is true, so I better not say, but we're gonna get to twenty twenty-four's money very soon. We'll get twenty thousand dollars. And that goes right in, that's an advance payment. So then when we get the grant award for the, maybe that grant, workforce development grant, sorry, we will get a lump sum in advance. Uh, WIC is the only one that pays in the backend. Yeah, and WIC pays a hundred percent.
WIC is the only one I understand.
In and out.
But keep in mind, because you guys do not pay, uh, our benefits for the other, so that's where I get my match, so I take the benefits because you guys pay those. And I, that's where I get my matching, does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it's, it's just, it's accounting for it is the question.
I can account for a penny.
On the workforce.
No, no, that's, that's all, that's all.
If her unaccounted balance at the start, if he's considering that in the budget, then we're already covering her expenses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because like she's saying, she's paid in advance, so if we're calculating that balance in her fund into the budget to fund that next year, then, then we are considering her reimbursement already, I mean, to some extent.
Okay.
I would ask that.
Okay, yeah, I'll look at that.
It's all of those outside entities, but how that carries over, so.
Nick, did you have a question for me?
No.
Keep up the good work. You do help a lot of people, bring in this, make a difference.
Like the last five minutes.
Mike is the last.
Yeah, five minutes.
Promise.
I needed a five minute break.
What we do down there is kinda like a moving target and you never know. The weather a lot of times dictates it, how much we spend on materials, repair, things of that nature. Uh, one thing that I wanna point out is the right-of-way expense. Uh, that's just kind of a number we put there for an average year, I don't know if that will come with the health grid bridge project. We don't know yet how much right-of-way we're gonna have to buy or what the value is. For the property, they put.
Isn't that gonna be a part of that project though? The expense on that project?
It will be, but we will have to pay. It's all part of the engineering right-of-way expense, yeah. Yeah, but we, we will have to, the county will have to pay them for, for the property that we acquire from them. And also, but that they count as our percentage, yeah, correct? I don't believe so, but I'm not sure.
You said I'm saying, yeah, we're, we're.
It's what I was saying, it's our, part of the project.
We're funding it.
Yeah.
That should be counted as part of the work in kind.
But like, uh, the engineering expense I know is not including in our, included in our percentage. I'm not sure about the right-of-way expense.
I think we could put in there whenever we wanted. As soon as for the project, the state's paying this much, we pay everything else, but either way.
And there again, the engineering expense on this is just a number that we kinda have for an average for the year. Uh, the engineering expense of fifty thousand dollars will not pay for the engineering of the new grid bridge. It would be significantly higher than that. So I just wanted to point that out. Equipment repair, there again, that's what I have, that is a, a, a very huge concern of mine because we're down to three mechanics, uh, my senior mechanic is gonna be leaving September. That's gonna leave my shop foreman and the young man that's, I think about twenty years old. He's willing to work, he's, um, he doesn't have a lock. He had, no, he had, he just doesn't have a lock.
Okay, good.
So we might, we haven't talked about that, have to go to outside sources for repairs. We can't hire a mechanic that's capable of doing what our mechanic is doing now.
Right.
Right?
Right, yeah, so that's, uh, we're probably gonna have to call more of our repair staff and, uh, which we're still here, but we may reach a point where they have to have the service, the services deeper. I don't, we do that now, a lot of huge deals change more on base now, they have minus the brake repair, all brake repairs. It could be that they have to just take it to the dealership if necessary.
Larry Dillon, director, Reggie, farming all that stuff out.
Yeah. Well, we could get to the point where we have the choice. And on the personal services, you know, I proposed a two dollar an hour increase, I really, I'm not sure that that's adequate. Because you guys know where we're at now, we're constantly losing help or even losing some help that, that hasn't been here even long enough to really get any benefits. But they, they just give a little experience under their belt and, and they move on. And it's been stated in here today, uh, and I used to state this to my previous employer, I would get frustrated because I didn't. I just told him in private that all we do is train our health, our companies. I think that that's happening here too. If we could bring people on board, show them the ropes, teach them how to do a job, they, they know and understand, they have confidence in themselves and then they move on. And they're not moving on for fifty cents per hour, they're moving on, you know, four or five dollars or more, so. And we do, we have some really good talented people down there. And with the work that they've done, saving some of these structures, uh, you did do the math on it, you can justify increasing their wages by, uh, looking at some of the structures that we may have had to put, uh, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars in to repair them, but yet if you had to have a contractor replace it, we would probably maybe, uh, four million. That one bridge on Wall Street, you know, on eighty first west of Wall Street. It's about the same size as the, you see the cost on that, you're looking at over a half million dollars to replace that bridge. And we're down there and we're, it's more than safe. And those guys, you know, yeah, I, I show them how to do this stuff, but they're the ones actually doing the work, I can't be. And those guys, you know, yeah, I, I show them how to do this stuff, but they're the ones actually doing the work, I can't be out there all the time, I wish I could, but I, I just can't. Do you have any questions for me on regarding this? I did, and, and also the solid waste budgets there, it's pretty straightforward. You know, every year we, we discuss, uh, to leave that hole open five days a week, do we cut it back to two or three days a week? You know, we're, we're here to provide a service, I do feel it's important to keep that open, because if we don't keep it open, we're just gonna be picking more stuff up out of the inches. The noxious weed budget, I, I, I did, you, I guess, well, I'll just wait, 'cause I think Deacon should be here, he's out praying today, so. Uh, if we can just allot a few minutes.
Sure, it'd be nice to hear from him.
And I want his input also, because his noxious weed truck, uh, it doesn't know us anything at this point, it's uh. We're gonna have to consider. Replacing it at some point.
As we've talked about several years ago.
Yeah. And I know we have, but the county's needs are very great, especially down there, so just like our facility down there. You guys are gonna get tired of listening to me talk about that, but. At some point, something is going to have to be done, because we cannot operate down there the way we are for any. I really want to take a hard look at going somewhere, acquiring some more acreage. Somewhere out in the flood plain, preferably close to a state highway and just start construction. If we had a new modern facility, and at some point we could increase our staff, or. We could take on bigger projects, uh, like the small culverts, and what we would consider less than a bridge, you know, twenty feet or greater is. A bridge in the state of Kansas, and it's subject to inspections, that we have. Small structures, just like the ones we've been replacing and repairing all over the county, that, that need replaced or, or repaired. If all the structures that we have in the county were subject to inspection, we would probably have to close that one. But, you know. If, if we had a facility. Uh, you know, with a, a good mechanic shop with a weld shop in it, we could, we could modify even old beams that we have in our possession now. Do some fabricating and what have you, and be able to, to build these small structures a lot easier. Than we do now, and I wanna keep moving forward, we need to, these rural roads are for, we're an ag-based county. Lot of ag in Washington. That being said, we need to keep these roads open, even though there might not be that, there may be cars moving down the day, in the day's time, but. We need to keep them open.
I would say, when people talk to you about what they want, it's always lower my taxes and fix the roads.
Right.
Like, you know, that's their main, their main concern.
Sure, no problem.
Right, but, you know, we do, do other things, um, and.
I, I used to tell my previous employer, I can pull around about that once a while, but I can't do it every time.
But I thinking, thinking long-term, I have thought about, um. When we have talked about the Shaw Road sunsetting and that sales tax. Um, I know we were approached, and Mike, you've talked about, you know, having that tax continue for the road. Uh, expenses, but we could maybe add, I didn't realize how much that actually brought in until I started looking. That we could add in then maybe a, a new road and bridge complex, and actually have that funded outside of. Like our budget or outside of bond, but it would be funded by that sales tax, we could, for a few years, you know, let that collect, um. And actually be able to do something, it just kinda makes it possible, I just think that sales tax is really important. We'll see how the city goes this year, they're having one in November, that they have one that's sunset, and they're, they're putting it back on the ballot. So it'll be interesting, I just think it's really important for the road bridge future, looking down the road, being able to do things that have to be done without. Without property tax, so.
And I, I appreciate that too, because it's, this is more than just us needing a, a new facility.
Yeah.
We definitely need, but like, I'm trying to hire a mechanic. They drive by, and they, they took the one at that place, and then they, you know, there's places they can go that are nice, new, modern shops, they got heat, they got.
And they look at their atmosphere, they, they can hire them. Yeah.
Some of them even have air. They buy their own workstation, I mean.
How many mechanics do you have now, like, how many mechanics do you have, I mean, mechanic positions filled?
Keep parting. Uh. Three, to, to, to be filled, uh.
Do you have any mechanics, like designated specific, that's what they do, if that's all they do right now?
Oh, yeah.
One, or two?
Well, we. Two and, and the, and the new hired gentleman that's working.
So two, and.
He's in the, he's on the mechanic staff, but.
The mechanic is retired, he's retiring. I just say that to say on a, on a constituent side of thinking, and we run several large pieces of equipment on our farm. Have we ever, 'cause I know a lot of people are having to change the way they think about things, so like, if you can't get the people hired in. What do you do, like, we can't force someone to come work for us, we can't force them to stay, especially in these different sort of positions, you know? So have we looked at, most of our equipment, we keep and pay for maintenance agreements and warranties, we have newer equipment, so how many are on warranties? How many are covered under the maintenance agreements outside of that? And outside of just, I think there's a man ingenuity for the type of men that you have, you know, that just know how to do things. So obviously, they're fixing things as well, but you have a hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars here for mechanics. Would it be better to keep one on staff, or put that person in a different position as a driver? And look at what would it cost for contractual outsourcing it, you know, we have, we have R and F, we have John Deere, we have several things here fully. We could utilize, it's just an idea, when I try to think about those things, have we looked at those comparisons?
Well, we're doing that now. And we're, we're doing that now, but you gotta keep in mind, like, Foley's shop right now is like two hundred and forty bucks an hour. And we have to get that piece of equipment to them, because if, if they have to come get it, then it'd get really expensive, so.
So another thing, I know we've invested in our equipment, but look, or Allen County now is like. Just renting equipment from John Deere, like all of their mowers and everything, so it's just on a rental.
Well, and they have.
So that they don't do their own maintenance, I'm assuming.
They have some really good deals out there.
So that's something else that we could look at, even though I know we invested in, but I think the equipment we invested in, we would keep, 'cause we still have a quarry and such, but. But as this older equipment. Needs to be replaced, I think it's worth looking into because of the labor problems.
Right, and some of these things, like the tractors, that John Deere had, for example, has some really good, uh. Uh, lease agreements out there, like Sayar Bushog, which we were gonna buy some last year, we didn't seem to get it done, but uh, they're not gonna lease you something like that.
Right.
There's too much risk, though.
One of the other things, if you talk about the quarry, it would be cheaper to hire in a crusher. I didn't buy a new one, you know what I'm saying, hire, hire in a crew, you're gonna guarantee, you're gonna buy this much rocket.
Yeah.
You're still paying for it there, but say that quarry you're selling by several different locations, it could crush in areas that you're done, you just go in and haul out.
I think Allen County just spent a million dollars getting another crusher.
What'd you talk about?
A little bit.
A little bit, a little bit, I know both of them have had.
Yeah, they both have.
Allen County said every piece of equipment that Corey broke down. Like last week, anyway.
But I, I, I do wanna stress that I, I feel that we should always have our own quarry.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe doing what you're saying, also, you can still buy the rocket, your quarry, but have something else come to it.
Crush it.
Actually crush it.
Get in, get out.
So you say, here's your bid, this is what we're taking, and. And that's what they do on all the major highway projects, like the one sixty-nine project, there was some crushing out there, I believe they were out in Iowa. But they had a massive crusher.
That's what the windmill did, that came in, crushed the rocket, they did.
They, they. Well, the, yeah.
So, anyway, our quarry's going right now, right?
No, I do, that's, I just, that's a something other system maybe that could be outside.
Yeah.
Can I get an opinion, I just talked today with, is it just not to make a decision, just an opinion? So I got permission because of VEP emergencies, especially for storms and stuff that we would turn TV here. I don't think I thought everything through, because he said Advantage would have to come and help. So would it be better for us just to keep the one upstairs, replace it if it's breaking, and not do one down here? Or do I need to put that in my. VEP grant and have it done? It's just a question, it's just, I just need your opinion.
I don't have an opinion, I guess, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't know what it is.
I'm a.
Yeah, that's a recap, six years.
Is your TV upstairs, is it hardware in with a network cable?
It only is because of what we do on it, which is the streaming of that program that. Shows the slides, I think the intent for it to be down here would be more for conferences and meetings, right?
No.
Yeah, so the.
And it's like, okay, they.
Correct, like, net, had TV access and streaming.
Oh, yeah.
See, I was, I have, I can't do it for mid-meetings, but I could do it, I could in my department, but I was thinking more for weather.
I mean, weather line, TV lines.
But I didn't realize.
But I don't believe anything in this room is generally powered, so if we leave power TVs on, we're gonna lose.
Yeah, no, I, are we done with you, Mike?
I don't know.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Yes.
Not sure.
Well, I could go on for another hour.
Uh, yeah, I could do one for days if you like, but uh.
Okay.
You know, while we're down here, okay, what, on the phone service, uh, what did you, did we cite anything on that down here?
So.
Another reason I ask is, is we have a cell phone booster in our office, and it works, it, it works, it really helps.
For all carriers?
Part of it, no.
All of your cell phone boosters are gonna be for our service.
No. And ours was not terribly.
It's not exactly in our specific to this specific service.
It, it wasn't terribly expensive, I think it was about two hundred and twenty-five dollars, you mount it on the wall. And then you had to have an antenna mounted outside, and then a cable from the unit on the wall to the antenna outside, plug the unit in. It does work, in fact, it wasn't terribly expensive, I've looked them up, they're all over the board, anywhere from a couple hundred to a couple thousand. But we did actually have a medical emergency in this very room, and we could not get phone service, and I had to send somebody upstairs to call, not even get an ambulance down here. It, it wasn't hard to install it, I know here, probably, yeah, it'd be a little more difficult.
Well, I could just replace the one in my office.
Yeah, but.
It's fifteen years old, and it broke.
Uh, I don't know if that's gonna help.
So you don't have a service, so.
No, it broke fifteen years ago, I just haven't replaced it.
Good night. In desperation, I actually went down and stood in front of your office door, it was locked, trying to find a way to.
Oh. Right, because my cell boosters broke right now, I don't know if it worked or not, though.
This was in February, I don't know if it worked or not.
It's, no, it hasn't worked for over fifteen years or more.
We do have the elevator, should we consider too?
Right now?
Being able, no, 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 just being able to have.
Of, to have a booster to help that?
Yes, yes, because I don't think Kansas Communications has worked out the phone in the elevator.
Oh, really?
That is something that we could get if we needed to for our office again, if it would benefit you.
Does a grant pay for it?
Of course.
There you go.
Would that work for the whole downstairs then?
I don't know, it, it works for us, but it's been a while, and I bought mine fifteen years ago. And honestly, I have not looked at them again.
All right.
We'll figure something out.
We can use one in the lobby too, for customers that can't get their insurance cards pulled up on their phones.
Well. And, and you know what, there.
And then you go outside, it's not a big deal.
Really?
Yeah.
There probably is a unit.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause we have, then we have to take their insurance on their phone, because it's just the way the world now, and they can't pull it, they do have to go outside to pull it up.
Yeah, we have.
There's a little.
You have to have insurance.
You wanna tag, you can.
We're all paid for insurance. Just the day you get your tag, not after that, right?
And so we can talk.
All right, Scott, we're gonna end this session, so we will be back here on. The eleventh then, not gonna meet next week?
Yes.
At one at two o'clock?
At two o'clock, no? Are we doing?
You gotta pull things out. Yeah.